Thanks for being here.
Good to go, Catherine.
Good.
Thank you, everyone, for being here. Welcome to the Planning Board this evening. We've got a fairly intense agenda before us at this point. You know, normally, we're going to ask for approval of the agenda, but you were going to ask.
I just have a question. Chairman, we've had the updated staff report. Can you just brief explanation of what the differences are?
Very, very minor. One particular application for Union Street, instead of saying that it was, I think, incorrectly put that as second curve, not a second curve practice based on any protecting.
That's it?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so with that little bit of clarification, I would ask someone to make a motion to approve the agenda.
Make that motion.
And second, there we go. Motion is now made and seconded for discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, ayes have you unanimously. So, this is kind of a new thing that we're going to wind up doing. Mark Lelet is graciously going to join us tonight. He's the Director of the Wana Comet Water Company. I'd asked the board to submit a series of questions in advance so that he could be prepared. This is going to be just a little under half an hour long because we do have kind of a busy meeting. That way, he had an opportunity to, with questions, be able to prepare for us as well. And the hope here is, over the course, if this seems to go well, the hope here is that, over the course of the next few months, we'll keep doing this with various directors to deal with things like sewer, Fortal Housing, the DPW Director, so.
Yep, I think that's a good thing.
And it's great for us to be able to get some information, and it's also an opportunity, too, to be able to present some things that you normally wouldn't be able to.
Right.
And we'll record this to make sure it goes up on the website so that
Good.
people can come back and play this again, too.
That's good.
Because I think they're going to miss a good lecture.
Well, I'll just give you a brief, brief little overview of our aquifer. Wana Comet about 10 to 12 years ago, 15 years ago, got really serious about defining our aquifer. And we've spent over $2 million in that last decade to do a whole bunch of geophysics and some specialized drilling that gave us solid core samples down to about 400 feet. We continue to do that work every year. We put that in the budget. And we have moved some capital money around for the upcoming year from a pipe project to actually investigating new pieces of property to add an additional pumping well. So, everything that you've seen in previous years, from the Horsley-Witten reports from back in the 90s where it just showed, you know, a plain, simple bowl under the island full of water, that's not what we have. There are three distinct layers: the upper, the middle, and the lower. The upper goes from ground surface down to about 100 feet, 70 to 100 in different locations. That separates the middle with a semi-confining unit, a tight soil, not a clay, but pretty silty tight. The upper is where most of the private wells are when you talk to Gibby-Holgate and the local drillers. That most residential homes are placed into that upper aquifer. Wana Comet is down about 150 feet, which is in the middle aquifer, which is protected from that semi-confining layer. And it goes, the middle goes to about 200 to 250 feet below ground surface. And then we run into a Glacial Lake deposit from Glacial Lake Nantucket that's over 100 feet thick. Took a lot of time and discussion while we were drilling if we wanted to poke a hole in that or not. That's kind of like inviting Dracula into the house. We didn't want to do it, and then we came up with a way where we could engineer a way for whatever was down there not to come up. So, we poked through it and found another freshwater sole-source aquifer underneath that. Now, that one, if we pumped that, and we're not doing that now, but if we had to, if you pumped that, that's actually a mining situation. The recharge has no effect on that lower. It can't get through the 100 feet of clay from Glacial Lake Nantucket. So, there is a, we haven't calculated how many gallons of water are in that. It's billions of gallons, but it would be a mining operation if you tapped into that. We dated the water from all three levels. The upper level is, the oldest in the upper level is about 6,000 years. The middle level, where we're pumping from, which does have a little bit of communication between the upper and the middle, not a lot, takes a long period of time for it to work its way through that tight layer. That came back at about 14,000 years old, so you're talking the Wisconsin glaciation is the water that Wana Comet is pumping to people 14,000 years old. And even older in the, below the Glacial Lake deposit, which happened during the Wisconsin glaciation, Glacial Lake Nantucket, so when we got into that lower, the real deep aquifer, you're over 20, 22,000-year-old water. So, we're in the process, every fall, we put money aside for the USGS to continue their geophysical investigation, and we have two special hydrogeologists working on their data. We have a 3D groundwater model that was developed and crunched at Los Alamos on a supercomputer. I think we're the only public water supply that's had that done. Sometimes, it's nice to have connections on Nantucket, and people know people. We're able to take that model with the information we have, and we threw in sea level rise and other factors, environmental conditions, and we run it for 60 years at the maximum pumping that we can do. And we have no saltwater intrusion. Those, that Glacial Lake deposit protects us on the bottom. It's not to say it couldn't come in from the sides horizontally, but vertical upconing, we can't get the model to show it. Right now, we're working more on the western end of the island, so when the guys come back in the fall, we did find saltwater intrusion in Maticet. It's a much shallower aquifer up there, and a few of the scientists that are working on this with us believe that, at some point, the Glacial Lake boundary, that Glacial Lake deposit on the bottom, stopped somewhere between, you know, here and Maticet. We don't know that for sure. We're going to have them work on the west side of the island. Our goal is to map the entire island with geophysical equipment and drilling to prove the geophysics were correct, and then get a real handle. Because even though Wana Comet really only, we're supposed to really only be concerned about those Zone 2s right there, since we are a sole source, we want to know everything about the whole aquifer, not just our Zone 2. That Zone 2 was developed by taking our maximum pumping conditions over a prolonged period of time with, like, drought situations, worst-case scenario, to find the boundaries of where to put that line on the map. Everything inside of that, we could have an influence on from our pumping. We could be bringing stuff in in worst-case scenario. We haven't been to that point yet. I won't say we won't ever get there because the pumps, as you know, were all been around this August. It's been pretty busy. The summer's been pretty busy, and we're pumping a lot of water. Our permit right now is for 1.68 million gallons a day. That puts us right around that 615 million a year. We are pumping at max capacity. Last year, our annual report showed that we pumped 101% of our permit, which DEP knew about that, and we're always in open discussions with them. There won't be, there shouldn't be, and probably won't be, any penalty for being the 1% over. We're in the process of getting our 20-year withdrawal permit, which is going to give us what we can take out of the ground for the next 20 years. That was supposed to be done six to eight months ago, but every three or four weeks, I'm sending us another subdivision plan to them saying, you know, here's the one on Old South Road that may need 26 million gallons of water a year. The one on South Shore Road's going to need 13 to 14 million gallons of water a year. If we are already at our max, they need to increase our permit. It is not a matter of water quantity or quality. It's the mechanics of getting the water out and being allowed by the Commonwealth, who owns the resource, to let us pump the rates we need to pump. And they are very open to increasing the permit. They're looking at a 15%, which would put us at about the 1.9 million gallons a day, an extra 10 million a year. That would help a lot. That gives us a little cushion. Everybody knows in the wintertime, we're much, much lower. But the subdivisions we're talking about aren't really summer residents. I mean, I think the majority of these, the two big low-income subdivisions we're talking are probably going to be year-round use, so that 30 million out at Old South and the 14 million over on South Shore are going to be year-round supply, right? It's not going to be a seasonal peak. So, we're currently, are still waiting on their response. They've come up a way for mitigation, for us to mitigate, to gain pumpage. So, if the 15% isn't enough, we can work with them. And anything purchased since 2005 inside that Zone 2 that's conservation or locked up and can't be developed, for every square foot, we'll get X amount of gallons a minute to pump. So, I have been working with the Land Bank and Conservation Commission to add up all those pieces. I know there's not a lot in town, but when you add up even the little small pocket parks here and there that have been going on, you know, all that counts. So, when we talk these larger subdivisions, can we supply them water now? You know, I think we can with the increase in what we have, but we will get to a point where we'll have to start talking about major capital improvements. The pumps can only pump so much, and the pipe can only hold so much. So, for us to increase these numbers, we're going to have to increase pipe size, look at another well location, like I already said earlier. We're moving a pipe project from the 2019-2020 capital program, and we're turning that into a new well, new source investigation, because that's really the only way to increase our permit through the state, is to add another source. But we've been moving forward with that, hoping they're saying maybe by late October, early November, we'll have that permit. And then we'll know for sure what the Commonwealth is going to allow us to pump as far as the resource is concerned. We have many projects coming up that deal with our infrastructure. There's probably 88 to 89 miles of pipe. I would say 60 to 70% of that's in pretty decent shape. Maybe 15% of that's okay. And then we've got a small percentage that's, you know, 10 to 15% that is in need of repair. And we have a 10-year capital plan that's all been approved. Now, I'm working a lot with David Gray, and we're working together to do areas where meet both our critical needs. He probably takes, the sewer probably takes a little bit of precedence over water. Our pipe can take a little bit more, as we all saw this winter. Our pipe, which was two feet away from the sewer pipe, didn't break. So, when he says he needs a critical area, that capital plan for the next 10 years that we've laid out, that we developed, and then David came along, and so now, we're changing some of those years to go into the most critical areas for him, and we'll go alongside him. We're looking at the North Liberty Street area now, Lily-North Liberty through Derry Moore, up across to Lincoln Circle, where we all know there's some big projects going on up there where we might need to increase our water main just for fire protection purposes in that area. So, that'll be a project where we're going to work together. The goal is to get, Rob McNeil at the DPW's been working with us very well as well. So, all three of us will look at this Needs Area map and determine where we're going to go. Try to go all together at once, do a section, do an area, pave the road, and be done. No more water go in, and then two years later, rip it up, sewer go in, and a year after that, oh, we have a storm brain problem, we've got to rip it up again. So, we're doing a lot of teamwork in this. The three of us meet quite often. David and I meet once or twice a week, or we try to. We're doing probably, last year, 115 or 120 new services. So, over the last four or five years, we've been averaging over 100 new services a year. And even with the new services, we pumped 4% less water last year and 5% the year before that. A lot of it has to do with some of the plumbing fixtures that are being used now in construction. Other things are our capital improvements, taking out that leaky pipe, replacing all of our hydrants that might have had leaks and some damage. So, our unaccounted-for water out of that 618 million that we pumped in 2017, 6% was unaccounted for. Mass DEP gives everybody a gold star if you can get under 10. Our goal is to get under 5 for next year, which I think we're going to do. So, we're in a good place. There is plenty of water. We have science to prove that there's plenty of water. It's the mechanics of getting it out, and it's the withdrawal permit dictated by the Commonwealth allowing us to pump what we need. Yes?
I just wondered, you mentioned Maticet.
Mm-hmm.
What other areas beyond your media service area?
So, we do have Maticet. Some of Maticet does have water. There is no sewer. What happens in that type of situation? If sewer goes where Maticet doesn't, the septic systems act as artificial recharge to keep the saltwater intrusion down. So, it goes into your septic tank out into the leach field and pushes the saltwater down. If you're on a well, you know, that's okay. You're pulling out, but, you know. When you remove the septic systems, there's no artificial recharge to push the saltwater down. But since, like, in an area of Maticet where we already have water, you don't have to worry about that. In an area, other parts of Maticet where we don't have water, if you were to have sewer without water, people are going to be pumping their own private wells, which we have no control over, how much they pump, how long they water their lawn, and you're going to have no artificial recharge from the septic systems going in. So, you could create an even bigger problem by doing that. So, whatever plans happen in Maticet for sewer, wherever they go, I know we're already in Maticet in some areas. Wherever sewer goes in Maticet, if it does go there at some point, we will go with them. So, we would stop that situation. There are three areas in Maticet right now. Starbuck, Columbus Ave, and that area, that are all asking us for water. There are three other small areas in town, off Bartlett Road, that are looking for water, off of Appleton. We do have water on Appleton, but there's a few side roads off of Appleton that are looking. We currently have 16 subdivision plans on our desk that all want water. On top of everything that the Board of Health with their well regulation has started doing, sampling the private wells, collecting that data, then obviously, if people are in an area of the island that has bad drinking water, from the well tests, we would do our best to supply water to those people as well, so. But it's all going to be dictated by what the system can handle and what the Commonwealth tells us we can pump.
Just, Mark, one thing I'd love you to do while you're here, wellhead recharger.
Yep.
This is, that term is constantly bandied around. Even for some boards, it gets a little perplexing at times. But I think since we're also addressing the public during the session, could you maybe just spend a few moments on that?
Sure, so.
I think it would help just to.
The wellhead protection is broken into two zones. Zone 1 is within 400 feet of the production well, which we own. We own it in Wyers Valley. We own it in North pasture. And we own it in the state forest. We were lucky enough to make a land purchase from the state forest, from the Commonwealth, to have that land. The DEP doesn't mandate that you own your Zone 1, but it makes the permitting a lot easier if you own it. So, we have to own that. After that, it's really down to hydrogeology and mathematics to determine what your Zone 2 looks like based on the science behind it. So, we would go out and drill holes, collect all the kind of data on the soils and the transmissivity of the soils, how fast particles move vertically and horizontally through the soils, what our rain does, how it infiltrates, how it recharges. And then we put it into a model that comes up with this scenario that gives you the outline of your Zone 2 protection area. As part of that, Wana Comet has a little bit of say, not a lot, on what happens in that Zone 2. Anybody that does a stormwater collection system or a major commercial development puts their stormwater collection plans together. It's reviewed at Wana Comet by myself or Rob West, and we go through all the calculations to make sure that they're true. If they're not, we reject it and tell them to change things if they are. We go ahead and take a look at it and where it is and how close it is to our Zone 1, and then give them approval or not. It's very important to maintain, since our Zone 2, a lot of it's already developed, and there's already a lot of impervious material in our Zone 2. The more we can manage and keep open, the better. When these stormwater systems go in, they can change the normal groundwater path. There's mounding under stormwater collection systems, so you're taking a place, if you just took a 10-acre piece that's woodland right now, it's raining outside. It's all going to naturally go in at an even time. It's going to take time to go through, and it's going to be dispersed across that property. If you put in a stormwater collection system, it's going to run off the roof, run off the parking lot, shoot down into a catch basin, and get down into the groundwater table with no natural attenuation. It's not going to have the time to go through the soils. It's there instantly. And what you've created, all from the 10 acres, you devoted all that runoff, 80% of it, they hope, 80 to 85% of it needs to be diverted and collected, but you're putting it in one location. And now, you're building a groundwater mound underneath that leach field. That mound, groundwater doesn't flow uphill. So, if you have a natural groundwater flow direction to the south and it bumps into a mound, it's going to turn east or west, whichever way is least resistant. So, in all these areas where these are going in, there's a local effect of groundwater change. Now, I'm not saying this is the reason why some places were flooded this year that have never been flooded. The groundwater table was higher than we've ever seen it. But there is an effect. There is a local effect on the groundwater within these areas of the Zone 2. So, the more we can protect that and keep the groundwater flow, everything that made those lips was based on mathematics done with groundwater flows in certain directions and recharge rates at certain times. The more we change that, the more we got to look at those, that outline, and maybe change that with a new model and new mathematics.
Mark, this is all fascinating. I truly mean it. I just had a question with the quality of the water from being 6,000, 14,000, and 20,000 years. Is one better than the other, and if so, is there treatment involved in that?
There is no treatment. I met with DEP, was actually here today. There are, I think, he said, seven or eight other places in the Commonwealth that don't treat, and most of those are very small systems in very small neighborhoods. We are the largest by far that doesn't treat, and he can't believe the quality of the water, either from the upper or the middle. We are more than fortunate, and I'm not joking when I say it's better than bottled water. You could take, you could take whatever name, brand you want from any store and bring it to me, and I will send it, we'll fill up a jug of ours, and we'll send it to a lab and compare. It's better than any bottled water. We are so lucky and so fortunate to have it. And because of the glaciers and the geology and the hydrogeology of the island, if we do what we're supposed to do to protect it, we'll always have that. You know, the bowl is full, so that Glacial Lake deposit has created a bowl. We have a 3D image of that bowl. Now, there are areas where we had to guess on the location of that bowl and its depth. And if you go at low tide to Monomoy, you see the birds, water's pouring out of the beach, low tide at Monomoy, right? The birds are drinking the water pouring out of the beach. Birds don't drink saltwater. Our bowl is full. We're actually losing fresh water out of our aquifer out the coast. So, it tends to think that, some of the scientists want to get Woods Hole Oceanographic involved. A few of the guys involved in this project that have been involved for over a decade seem to think that our aquifer extends to the South Shore way out, maybe 30 miles offshore. So, you would actually drill through the seafloor and through some sediment and find that deep, deep, untouched freshwater aquifer. You know, if that happens, I don't think, I don't know if we have any control or say on what happens 30 miles offshore, but if they do find that, you know, that's another supply.
Great. So, I'm going to allow one last question because we're closing up on that 5:30 hour. Go ahead.
Thank you. Can I, one short question?
Yeah, please.
And then one little bit longer?
Well, I'm kind of, I really, we've got a fairly deep agenda, too, so I just, and I did promise him a half an hour.
Okay. So, the question really is, as a planning board, we're charged with approving subdivisions, a special permit for addition, certain types of development. How do we know, as a planning board, what areas might be affected by the applications we're getting? So, for instance, how do we know that we're getting an application for something and that if that's not, if it's not town water, if it's going to be well water, septic systems, how do we know that building here isn't going to adversely affect the neighbor's well or whatever?
There really is no way unless we were involved with all of it. And we have, Wana Comet has nothing to do with private wells or septic. We could do what we're doing right now, and if there's concerns over a subdivision or concerns over a development that you guys are talking about, we're more than willing to come in and take a look at what it is and how it could affect the Zone 2 or a Zone 1. As far as outside of our zone, we really have no say in what goes on out there. I'm willing to give as much hydrogeology background as I can on the island and those parts of the island to help you make your decision, and you guys have hard, you have hard decisions to make. I mean, there's a lot of things happening, a lot of things coming before you. I'm happy that, you know, we were invited in. We're happy that people are starting to think about the water in the sewer, because you've got to remember, if I'm increasing my permit to 1.9 or 2.1 or wherever we're at in 10 years, the sewer's got to take what I pump. And that system probably needs more work than the water distribution system. So, there's a lot of capital involved. So, if I increase my pumping, David has to accept what I pump because he's pretty much everywhere in that Zone 2. Everywhere we are, except for Maticet and Cisco, David is. So, whatever we increase to meet demand, he has to be able to take to meet demand. So, I think just more information, you know, settings like this where we can talk, or we can come in, I don't know, meet with smaller groups of you on a more regular basis or the same way, once a month or twice a month, or per-project basis, just so we can share some information to help you make the decisions you got to make.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you, anytime.
Thank you.
Seriously, anytime, just give me a call. Thanks.
And I, sometimes these things will generate more questions as well, too. I know you're great because your door's open, so.
It's open. Anytime, you can stop in, call. I'll meet you anywhere. You can come by, whatever it takes.
Beautiful.
We have a bunch of data and a bunch of, I know we're kind of geeky, but it's cool to us.
No, it's good stuff. It's good, it's good and important stuff. Thank you so much for being here. I really appreciate it. So, anyways, board members, who's, Andrew, who we got on top for next moment?
We have Rob McNeil.
Okay. So, you'll be getting a little notification from Andrew as to make sure you get your questions lined up in advance for him as well, too.
David Gray after him.
Yep, so we can do the same thing. So, he'll give you a drop-dead date in terms of doing that as well. So, thanks, guys. I see you standing, Mr. Cohen. Is there a point of order you need to discuss? Because I really have a pretty deep agenda here.
Yeah, it is a point of order. I've been requested by some of the butters who are here for the Act Bowling to continue it in advance of them waiting for a couple hours. If you would allow that, they could leave.
Sure, so you want to just continue that to 9:10?
Yes, please.
All right, I think we can, on Act Bowling, 3518. I don't, I don't see the board getting all riled up about not being able to do that, so that's great.
Fritz, did you make a motion? I thought he did.
We can handle it when we get there as well, too. I think, I don't see a problem there.
So, we don't have to do that now?
No.
Okay.
No, I'm not seeing any of you jump out of your seat and say, "How dare you." So, thanks. All right, so here we go. So, for consent items, you have 10 A&amp;Rs before you at this point, eight second dwellings, five tertiary dwellings, and you've got nine previous plans. Is there anything out of that whole batch you want to isolate out that we need to talk about? Okay, so, all right, so then I'm going to, then we'll break it down into its smaller pieces. How about in the A&amp;R section, anything we need to isolate out there? Anything we need to isolate out there?
Just recusing.
All right, hold on. So you're going to recuse from?
8263 Belleville.
8263. All right.
I wanted to put a back to road.
All right.
Explanation.
Oh. That's 8265, is it?
That's right.